Something we modify.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, okay. The second one is in regards to 26. It was brought up that agreements. We have joint powers agreements for both the Oxnard and the Camarillo. So our agreements, does that wording, agreements need to be in here? It's 26. Because I heard our city council, or city, yeah, council, state about agreements not being included. And then we couldn't ask you to talk at the same time, so I'm giving you the chance now. Okay, agreement of 1976. We also have a JPA for Camarillo and we have a JPA for Oxnard. So I was just asking if the word agreement would be included in this, does it need it? Versus what the city of Camarillo suggested.
So a requirement that the lessee abide by, quote, "all agreements," unquote?
It could state statutes, ordinance, orders, laws, rules, regulations, agreements. Just adding the word agreements.
That can be done. That would have a huge number of consequences that I think ought to be avoided.
How do you include both JPAs for Camarillo and Oxnard? The agreement of 1976 and the agreement we have with the city of Oxnard? How do we make sure that that's covered in here?
If the desire was to reference those, you would just name them.
Okay.
Be specific to those two respective agreements.
Do you believe that that would be needed? Because we have those agreements with both cities.
Well, that's a, that's a, kind of a policy question that is sort of beyond my pay grade. Whether or not we want to add to agreements between the county and tenants on the airport, references to the joint powers agreement. It could be done, certainly, because all sorts of things can be done in contracts. But whether or not we should do so, I would not be able to say.
Just a comment. If you look at Exhibit B that was handed out, there's six items on it. At least two of those items are no longer in force. So then you start getting into a quagmire of who's right.
The reason why I'm asking is because a couple of months ago, we were doing bylaws and reviewing everything. So I'm just making sure that we're including what we need to include on this. Okay. So I would want to understand that. Sorry, that's above a pay grade, but I would need to understand that to make sure that's covered. I don't get paid for this authority. The next one is on 35, just the splitting of it for those two, sublet and the other. And then 36, I agree with Councilman Craven about the threshold. I need to understand what the difference is between 26 and 38. Those were the four things that I would want to see answered before I agree done it.
Mr. Chairman.
You're his chair.
Thank you. I, for one, am, when I saw the final draft of the new lease, I was tremendously relieved and let's say thrilled, because it's such a wonderful thing compared to what we had two or three years ago. We weren't getting anywhere, but it was just pure chaos was ruling the, all the discussions about it. We weren't going anywhere but downhill. And over the last year, frankly, due, I think to Kip and his staff, this thing has literally reshaped itself into a document that's fair both to the public, the users, the airplane users, and I'm one of them, and to the representatives that need to watch out for the public interest, et cetera. So it's a glorious thing. I thought for sure that it would just fly through tonight without too many issues, me being, I'm supporting that. However, I do hear loud and clear Dr. Fussell's remarks. I think the representative from Cohort, or whatever it is called, has three or four legitimate concerns, and I think, without being hasty, we should just get those few items resolved, because I do think they're legitimate concerns. I'd like to see those items taken care of. If it takes, it can't take more than before the next meeting. And if we could get those, the document amended to satisfy their concerns, and I think they're simple, then I, for one, would be a happy boy and ready to go forward. Thank you.
Number one, I would like to thank Mr. Turner. Different from the other city councilmen for the city of Oxnard on this board, I haven't been here that long, but I'm not a newbie. When I did come on board, the hot issue, I mean, these were supposed to be very boring, dull meetings, was small airplane hangar owners. Got to be extremely exciting, and the advisory committee, extremely exciting. A different, sometimes personality clashes, gas in a match type stuff. But Mr. Turner has accomplished a lot from the original proposal that was here, that I heard. And I'm, and I don't have an airplane. I'm very fortunate to have flown with a couple of people in this room, but I don't have an airplane. So I don't have really a dog in the fight, other than I represent my city on this board. And with that, I believe in fairness. And it's been mentioned by one of the speakers, trust. I became elected on my city. One of the main reasons was the population had lost trust with what was going on in my city over a long period of time. It's got to be a square setup deal that's going on here. The questions that are being asked, and again, tremendous respect for what the change has been with Mr. Turner on board and the staff. But there's a few questions that are being asked that I think could be made much better for everybody involved. Twenty years goes by in the wink of an eye. And I don't mean to degrade anything, but trust is a big thing. And if you get, you know, I know it's very easy to say we can work things out in three hours. This has been going on for a long time. There's been a tremendous amount of change since Mr. Turner's come on board. I think that some more can be done. I appreciate the city, the county attorney answering my questions. I am sometimes challenged that I am nasty when I ask the questions. I'm not trying to be. But I will give you some examples of why I might be considered nasty. I'm going to ask some questions right now. When an individual comes up and they said they looked on the internet at their FFA and certain things are not on the internet that I was led to believe in the presentation, I'm like, who do I say is telling the truth? When we have an attorney for another city, the one that we happen to be sitting in these chambers, come up and talk about an agreement that I didn't know about, and I appreciate your answer, and I appreciate the questions from Supervisor Long, agreements, I'm going to ask a question. Are there any other agreements we don't know that somebody is not in this room to tell us about that we may be, you know, in jeopardy of screwing up, for lack of a better way to determine? The issue about the discrimination. This week, I had an opportunity to attend a funeral, and I'm being very blunt. The points that were brought up about what is not in the discrimination, the individual happens to be a transvestite, and they married, they buried their mother. And the things that I saw about discrimination, it needs to be covered. All members of all groups are covered in the discrimination. I cannot support this unless that's in there. I cannot. Just as if I would not support anybody being on this board that's not a pilot, or have an airplane, or never having gotten off the ground. Everybody's in the same boat. The issue with social security and the license, it sounds like it'd be covered, but as I mentioned, somebody brought up a question, and I don't know if they're right or wrong, but I'm trusting that I'm going to get an honest answer. And I don't feel that I've got a clear answer yet. One thing that was, that I believe is not clear, if we have private airplane hangars and we have apparently another hangar that doesn't have to comply with the same rules, these private airplane hangars, and there was a PowerPoint shown, is that like a little bit of treating one different than the other? I think we're all supposed to be treated the same. The issue about mediation. I represent a city of almost quarter of a million people, just because I won an election. Only reason that I'm there. But I do know this, the power of the government to provide attorneys, and the county has a cadre of attorneys working for the county. And one individual to take on a cadre of attorneys, they're going to look at their spouse, and they're going to go, just how deep do we want to follow this? How much of a fight do we want to put? And a lot of people will roll over, quit, whatever. It takes somebody with some guts to take on a big challenge, and they usually lose. I think if there's an opportunity for some sort of mediation, or some, you know, not forced, but something where cooling off period, they can talk, and not that it goes on forever and ever, but there's got to be that opportunity. And I believe that's a very good idea. I wish that I'd use it in my own personal life sometimes. Passion's going to run deep and things get said, and you never back away from the position you took. You need to have somebody with a cool head in between, in my opinion. And I really appreciate everybody that's spoken. Again, I had the opportunity to attend the advisory, and I disclosed before this meeting that I'd spoken with the general manager and the legal counsel. I do find that apparently a lot of other people did the same thing. I think it's a good idea for boards to disclose that to everybody sitting in the audience. If I've come across as harsh, I apologize, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve my city on this board and the county on this thing. And I hope my comments are taken in that vein. I can't support this item tonight. I think there are some minor changes that need to be done. And if I can address my fellow councilman from Oxnard, Mr. Flynn, if we're going to make a long speech, identify which one of those things you want to change. I've identified some specific ones. We need to say something. Words matter. Comments matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We've worked on this thing for years after years after years. You know, we, I know Todd worked on it, and Kip came and took over, and we've been wordsmithing this for years, you know. And if we give more time, we're going to have more comments come in and more wordsmithing. And I'm not satisfied with X, and I'm satisfied with Y. And I personally am looking for the protection of our residents, the protection of the county of Ventura, for all the residents that this, this airport belongs to our constituency. So I'm going to, I'd like to make a recommendation. I'd like to make a motion, Mr.?
I'd like to provide my comments, too, before.
He's already made a motion.
Yeah, it's okay.
Do that.
Can I make that motion?
Well, I'm going to make my comments, and then you're free to make your motion. Yeah, one of the benefits of being a chair is you get to speak last. So I do have a few clarifying questions, really quick, of staff. In regards to the pilot certification number being on the lease, is there any way to where you cannot have that included on the lease?
You know, we could probably figure something out. We would need to verify they're a pilot, but it may be that we could do that. It'd just be another staff function that would be required.
But you could have a lease with a tenant without this specific listing of their pilot certification?
We would just have to look up each person as they come in and verify that they're a pilot. I mean, because they have to be a licensed pilot to have a lease and have the airport, I mean, have a lease on.
Yeah, I'm looking for, I'm just simply looking for a way to mitigate their concern of the fact that there's, their pilot license listed on a public, what potentially is a public document. And I'd share their concerns about potential lack of redaction if that document is shared.
They always have the option of changing their pilot's number. It's not a hard thing to do. You just send a form in and you change it. It's not hard at all. So somebody that's really concerned about that could do that in a very simple step. But, I mean, we're, this is normal information that you would have on a lease. So could we do it? I mean, it's like Tom said, yeah, I mean, you can do a lot of things, but it would, it would not, it would not be normal, I guess.
Are there different thresholds or severities of offenses when it comes to FAA? Are there, like infractions, are there different levels? An infraction versus some sort of flagrant violation of FAA rule or regulation?
For pilot deviations?
Yeah. I'm specifically referencing the issues, yeah, 26 and 38, well, specifically 38, and the threshold, identifying of a threshold when it comes to a violation, or particularly a FAA violation. Sharing a lot of the concerns of the people in the audience who spoke, where is that threshold? Where does it lie? Getting clarification on that point? Is there, is there, is there a way to clarify that in regards to severity?
We're both trying to better understand the question, I think. Are you, are you asking if there's different violations, or are you asking if there's?
Sure. So their primary concern in regards to that language is that it pretty much covers the gamut. That effectively, if I get, if I get the equivalent of a jaywalking ticket from the FAA, that my lease could be revoked or terminated immediately. And/or, let's just say, the equivalent of capital murder, or something like that. But, you know, in a regular court law, there is different severity of crimes, misdemeanors, federal offenses, whatever. Does the FAA have a similar ranking, a similar order of, in regards to severity? If they get the equivalent of a jaywalking ticket, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not familiar with all the different FAA regulations or whatnot, I'm a noob, but is there a way, a way to clarify that for them, to give them that greater clarity that they know that some sort of small infraction, some innocent small infraction can't be exploited and used against them for determining their lease immediately?
Yeah. So I think that's, that's what's happening.
You know, it's hard to sit here and answer that.
No, no, I'm sorry, and I apologize for putting on the spot, but, you know, it's...
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, just as a quick, could I just have a few seconds on that?
Sure.
So I've raised the same issue about just the termination issue, and I'm wondering whether, not to sidestep the staff being able to answer your question, or, but maybe that's, if we, there does seem to be, I don't know if there's a consensus, because I haven't been counting, but I know there are at least three or four issues that have emerged that are of concern. I share the same concerns that you do about, primarily out of all the things that have been said, about the termination and the violation of the rules. So I'm wondering whether I would just recommend that that be worked on to their satisfaction.
Okay, yeah. And very well, it could be. And I simply asked the question because I didn't know if the answer was, was immediately known or not.
My only question would be there's not being a pilot. I understand buzzing a tower is a real flagrant violation, but there's been discussion about something cutting a corner. I'm not sure what that is. There must be some severance, or some degree of, you're in deeper hot water doing one versus the other. That's the only...
Mr. Chairman, during this law, I might be able to help you just a dab. I think the reference Mark made to cutting the corner was airspace corner, like Oxnard has a defined area, Camarillo does, too. It's not uncommon to come across that corner, because everybody does it, but sometimes one might take exception to it, meaning the FAA. When you receive an FAA violation, or you do, a violation occurs, then they inform you of that one way or the other, but nobody runs out and hands you a ticket. There's no series of, you know, 10% or bad, or, you know, go to jail immediately. First of all, they notify you of it, and then they ask you to call them, and then it goes through a process of them trying to prove what you did, and et cetera, et cetera. And it takes several weeks, if not months, to get the thing clarified, to where they finally issue you a citation, ask you to come in and, you know, do some recurrent training, or whatever the violation dictates in their mind, once they finally make up their mind and prove that you did it. So it's quite a lengthy process, not an easy slam dunk thing. Thanks.
Still not answer, right?
Well, I think, I don't think I can answer that tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
Because there's a lot of, we would need to research what the county's legal interest would be before we just blindly answer that.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is written right now with the, you know, the intent to obviously protect the county's interest. We don't want a felon on the, on the airfield if we've, if they're violating, if they're not able to operate in the capacity of aviation. Airports are designed to provide a platform for people to operate in an aeronautical activity. If they're not able to operate in that capacity anymore, you know, they're occupying prime property that other people could come in and use as aeronautical property. So, I mean, to try to put a threshold to that, and, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's possibly a way, but I wouldn't be able to identify what that would be tonight.
Mr. Craven?
Well, I guess, under 26, you could still get the property back, but you have to go through a process. It isn't immediate. I guess, I guess my problem is, I don't know the difference because of the definitions in 26. They're all exactly the same words. You violated this, and you go through a process. You go through this with the same words that you violated, and we're going to take it immediately. And I don't know the difference. I haven't come up with that difference from what anybody said.
Just to repeat something I said earlier, and I probably wasn't clear. Section 38 operates, and I believe I've got the section number right, somebody stop me if I'm wrong.
It's the immediate termination.
Termination provision. The primary function of section 38 is to exempt the things that it lists from the 30-day notice and cure provision in the other section, whose number I don't have off the top of my head. 26. No, the...
Well, it says, you have to abide by the applicable statutes, ordinances, orders, laws, rules, regulations, minimum development standards, and the requirements, and this is what I'm saying is the same, requirements of all federal, state, and municipal governments and appropriate departments, commissions, boards, and offices thereof. And this one just says that the county may terminate immediately at any time and without prior written notice in the event lessee violates any federal, state, or local law, rule, regulation, or lawful instruction of any department of airports, servant, or guard. Now, that part isn't in 26, but all the rest of the words are the same. So I'm not understanding the distinction in how you would decide whether you are going to take it immediately or go through the other process.
Section 38 simply gives the county the ability to issue a termination notice before and without going through the 30-day notice and cure process that's identified in section 37, the immediately prior section. Those two sections operate. Some violations, most violations, you have to do notice and cure for 30 days. A limited set of violations in section 38, you don't have to give the 30-day notice an opportunity to cure.
Didn't seem like it was very limited.
Is section 38 more directly related to, if you want to call it aviation-related violations? Talking about use of county airport premises, hangar privileges, aircraft storage, certificate issues, permit issues by the county? Is that more aviation-specific than paragraph 26, which is very general as far as what they're talking about? Is that, is that distinction valid?
Yeah.
Yes. I, I'm reading, I'm reading the two paragraphs, and I see section 38 as being more specifically related with immediate termination to, if you, for lack of a better term, aviation-related violations, county airport, premises, hangar, certificate, stored aircraft, permit issued by the county, et cetera, et cetera, where paragraph 26 doesn't say anything other than rules and regulations in a very broad and general sense.
That's correct. I mean, you've read that, right?
Okay.
So under 26...
To me, that's the, that's the difference. But, you know, that's me reading it.
And, I mean, I can provide a little bit of history in the sense that section 38 is taken almost verbatim. I think there's been some changes from the existing month-to-month lease that's in there. The Cohoda's request was that it be limited in some way to things related to the airport. I can't remember exactly how they put it.
That seems...
And so the limitation was put in there just recently to have the violation be related to aviation.
That seems like how it's written to me. That seems to be the difference in essence between the two sections. So, a traffic ticket unrelated to the airport, okay, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but a traffic ticket unrelated to the airport, frankly, I don't think the airport's going to chase you down and give you 30-day notice. If you violate airspace that goes uncorrected, or you're flying without a license or something, an egregious violation related to the airport, then that's another subject entirely, because that directly relates to the airport. If you get a speeding ticket, I don't think the airport's going to care.
It doesn't say that in 38.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't say that in 38. The only place airport is mentioned is for a person who works for this county airport.
Okay.
It says, at any time and without prior notice, in the event that lessee violates any federal, state, or local law, rule, regulation, or lawful instruction of a department of airport, servant, or agent. But it doesn't say airport-related, federal, local, or anything else.
Well, the next paragraph in red says where that violates...
Oh, you know what?
...any way related to lessee's use...
I was looking at what was in the packet. I'm sorry.
Okay. Maybe we're reading two different documents.
We were.
Apparently, we are.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay. So I think maybe the horsies...
Okay.
We can come back to it.
Are we...
Sorry.
Are we on the same page now?
Last-minute changes confuse me.
Okay, well, I'm just...
As Tom pointed out a minute ago, this started out being the same exact language as the existing phrase that we've had for 40-something years. We actually made it less lenient based on the request of Cohoda, or more lenient, excuse me. It's late, and I'm getting tired. But we made it more lenient on the request of Cohoda. So that's what, that's what's in red, is per that request, to make it more lenient. The other language was what was existing for, for years and years and years.
In 38, though, it talks about the, lists a whole bunch of violations, but it says any certificate issued by the FAA. So if you violate, if you're in violation of essentially FAA regulations that apply anywhere? So what some of the speakers have said is, if I went to Oklahoma and I violated some airspace, or I had some small infraction in Oklahoma, in violation of FAA, in violation of my certificate, then that could come back and hit me here, regardless of how the egregiousness of that violation.
I'll be surprised if we end up ever with a lease that doesn't have some hypothetical scenario in it that wasn't discovered during the course of the construction of the lease. I can tell you the intent of this language that, as I read it, is to, if you take your airplane, and this is just an example, maybe, and you start smuggling drugs with your airplane, the Ventura County Department of Airports, even if you got caught in Oklahoma, is probably not going to want you to keep residing in our leases as a convicted drug smuggler. Now, that's just one of many, many, many scenarios. I'm just trying to come up with what the intent is most likely in here for. Again, this is language that's been backed off of from the language that exists today. So this is not, this is not something new in this section. This is protect the county's interest. And I don't know how much more, I mean, I'll let the attorneys figure that out, but I'm not sure how much more that can be adjusted to not protect the county's interest in those kind of, in those kind of things. I can tell you, there is not the intent to worry about whether someone's got a parking violation on their aircraft, or whatever other scenarios that we want to come up with tonight, but I'm not sure we'll ever get to a bulletproof lease, if you will, to that extent, on any of these items. I think, as somebody said, we could be here for another four years trying to do that. I think there has to be an understanding of good faith and intent and understanding of, that we do have an interest we have to protect as the county, first and foremost, because it is a county asset, and we do have to protect that interest, just like if... Just like if you were leasing your house, you may have provisions in your, your house lease that may or may not be exciting to the leasee, but they might be there because you need to protect your interest of your house. It's really no different here.
Well, I'll, and to keep moving this along, because I know we're getting, it's getting late, but I'll finish up some of my comments here before, and then we can move on to see what suggested action the, the authorities want to take. But I, I do recognize this is a drastic improvement from what, what, what began. And I will agree with a lot of sentiments up here in that KIP is a breath of fresh air. I was not intent, very vested in the airport or its business prior to serving on this authority, or for, on the Camero City Council for that matter. You know, I grew up, I mean, born and raised in Camarillo. I grew up in a donut shop and at, out at the Camero Airport, where my grandfather owned a, owned a plane. I vaguely remember it. I remember via seeing pictures of myself with him, you know, in the hangars and, with his, with his airplane. And that's, that's my closest connection to, to the airport. I do appreciate there were a lot of concessions made by the county in this. And I think it's, it's worth noting and it's worth saying thank you for making those concessions and working with the hangar owners and association in making some of those concessions. The fact that reversion, that was a big, big issue, the fact that they got a 15- to 20-year lease term is, is a very big deal. I agree that we could wordsmith this to death and it could, we could all be here for years and years and years. I do recognize that it's taken a very long time, but over those five-plus, or whatever, however many years it was, five-plus years, very little happened and very little progress was made up until maybe just these last few months. With that basically said, I do, I do share some of the sentiment of, of my fellow authority members that just because in that first, first four years under some different leadership, progress wasn't really able to be made, doesn't negate the ability for further progress to be made. And for some of these things also to get cleaned up, some of these concerns. And there are for a few, a few, I think legitimate concerns and clarity that's sought by the lease, those who would lease these, or purchase these, these hangars are looking for. Obviously, when you enter into an agreement or a contract, it's between two parties. You, obviously, you have, you have, you have a contract because there is a general lack of trust in a way, right? Because otherwise, we just take everyone's word for everything and do a handshake and that'd be great. Fortunately, in our world, that just doesn't work and it's not really enforceable. And so we have to have words written down on paper outlining exactly what both parties agree to. And with that, there needs to be some understanding and clarity as to what those two, what those words mean to both those respective parties. And when it's sometimes where there's a lack of clarity or concern over what that language means and how it can be interpreted, there's, there's, there's probably some questions that need to be asked and, and some, some further discussion that needs to be had. I understand that we could discuss this forever. The vast majority of the concerns that were presented to us, I think, are, are more wordsmithing concerned, you know, they're nitpicking. We can talk about the definition of media all day long. I'm not particularly concerned about the access card. I, I understand legal or council's point about, you could take away their, the access cards may not work, or you may not provide them an access card, but they have a legal right to, to their property and access to it. And if you guys get in the way of that, well, then you're probably in violation of a hell of a lot more than just this simple lease. And there are definitely remedies and, and, and means by which to, to remedy that situation that'll be very expensive, unfortunately, for both parties. But I, I understand the explanation there. I do have, as one speaker pointed out, he does happen to be counsel to, to the city of Camarillo, that the, that paragraph 26 does not mention, not just agreements, and I understand the complexity and the issues presented by just simply vaguely stating agreements, because what agreements? That could take, I mean, there's a lot. So the way around that is you be specific as to what agreement you're talking about. In this case, we have a very specific agreement signed in 1976 in which, between the city and the county, which stipulates how the airport is to be run. And that was done, just like we're kind of discussing now with the lease, it was, it was an agreement between two parties to make sure that there was clarity and understanding as to how this facility is going to be run that wouldn't adversely impact particularly, in my case, the city of Camarillo and its residents. There is no, there's no reference to that. Now, this agreement, and I know there's been a lot of other discussions around the 1976 agreement and, and other capacities and in regards to other topics. The agreement sets the guidelines for the operation of the airport, the most, you know, 30,000 feet, excuse the pun, but, you know, level as to how the airport is supposed to To that end, every hangar owner or leasee on that property is thus subject to those conditions that the county and the city jointly agreed to. So a lack of a reference to that specific agreement is, I just, I find it lacking. I think there's additional benefit in making sure that there's consistency amongst all the leases that the airport has with its leasees, because we don't want to seem discriminatory in any capacity. Clearly, some of the airport hangars members had already brought up some other, some other discrepancies where, you know, in regards to immediate termination provisions, where their lease states one thing, and yet the leases of other lease, leases of other leasees on, on airport property has no such language. I find that to be, you, one could say discriminatory in a way towards the little guy or against the little guy. So, you know, I would like to see this language added. Oxnard can, can decide whether, whether they want to add, also include reference to the, any Oxnard agreement the city of Oxnard has with the, with the county. But speaking on behalf of Camarillo and Camarillo's authority, I think making reference to this language, the restrictions of the 1976 agreement between the city of Camerio and the county of Ventura, except to the extent, if at all, all that those restrictions are preempted by federal, state law, I think that's, I think that's decent language and I think it's worthy of inclusion, considering that this lease, well, these leasees are going to be subject to this agreement. They should be. You know, it only makes sense. It's relevant. It's, it's definitely relevant. You know, apart for that, I, the vehicles, I was going to bring up the vehicles in the square footage, but it's already been brought up. I think a lot of this does, is driven, and it's my last comment, I'll wrap it up. I tend to be long-winded, I apologize. I know a lot of this is driven by a deep, it's, I don't mean, I'm going to say more negative, the words are going to be seen more negative than, than they're intended, but kind of a deep-seated resentment or distrust between hangar owners and, and Department of Airport. And I think it's probably more aimed at, at some of the old leadership or some of the old, older individuals that have since left the, the airport. Obviously, an agreement is only as good as the intention and I think the goodwill and the good nature and trustworthiness of the individuals on either end of that agreement. Yet all the more reason to make sure it's, it's as clear as possible, because as we had stated, you guys had stated, those, those people are going to change. You know, these tenants are going to change over and certainly the people at the, the county are going to change over from time to time. So it's, it's got, it's, it's not made for any one individual. It's got to last for the next 15, 20 years, spanning several different individuals. So, but I don't think that, I don't think this is necessarily aimed at any one individual. KIP, I think you have done a very admirable job in, in the short time you've been here. And I really look forward to, to, to all the things you, all the assets and things you bring to the Department of Airports. I think, you know, apart from some of the complaints and changes that are, been discussed here, I think overall, I think it is, it's still, it's greatly appreciated the effort and the work that you've put into this and you, you have shown quite a bit of goodwill towards it. And I do appreciate that. I don't want it to go unsung, because I think, I absolutely think that's worth, worth mentioning. I'm done.
So then, we have one motion on the floor.
On the, yeah, Oxnard side or Camerio's side?
Mr. Chair, I, I'm speaking here for myself. I know that you mentioned Oxnard and, and Camerio. I thought with the hangars, or for both, Oxnard and Camerio. We're not separating the, the hangars. You vote for Camerio hangars.
Oh, just, yeah, we'll take, take it all together.
Take it all together.
Yes, my apologies.
I know that we spoke about wordsmithing and we've been working on this for years and years and years. We, this has just didn't happen, but when KIP just got here about 11 months ago, we've been working this, on this item for many, many years. And, and again, I'm looking at it for the protection of, of the residents of Ventura County, for the taxpayers of Ventura County. This is an enterprise fund that needs to be supported as a business. So I'd like to make a motion at this time. I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation one and two, and that, number one, is to approve the revised form hangar lease agreement for privately-owned hangars for Camerio and Oxnard Airport Authority to replace the current month-to-month lease with term leases. And number two, authorize the Director of Airports and his designate to terminate all existing month-to-month leases agreements for privately-owned hangars and to sign the revised form lease agreement with the terms, with, excuse me, with tenants of existing privately-owned hangars. I'd like to make this recommendation, motion that we accept staff's recommendation one and two.
All right, we have a motion on the floor? And this will die for a second?
Mr. Chair?
And so I'd like to make a motion that we take, the, the staff has been making notes on, you know, the top three and four issues. That way we know it's not going to go on and on and on, that we have the top three or four issues vetted and worked out, and then that be brought back to us, and, and that's my motion.
Second.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting. Sorry, I'll add that.
Do you want to, do we want to clarify just, just what those three or four things are? I mean, from our discussion, we've kind of addressed them. Does, I want to make sure staff is clear, because otherwise, we're going to go through this, this all over again.
Right, and say those weren't the three or four.
Does, does staff have clarification, does staff need clarification, or is staff clear about the, the specific concerns in regards to lease agreement that authority members have?
Yeah, let's not assume that we agree on which issues need to be discussed. We need to clarify it with numbers.
Okay, I, Mr. Chair, so I, I said mine twice, maybe three times, and mine is my concern about violation of FAA rules and the 30-day termination. That's my concern.
What number, what number on the lease, please?
38, thank you.
So what, what are you requesting clarification of, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it, is it threshold of pain, severity, or what, what do we need to clarify?
I, I think it's up to them to, I mean, if we start getting into specifying what we think needs to be resolved with those individual things, I think it's complicated. So I would rather just say, because of the hour, that we just name those three or four issues, have them go back, give them direction to work this out with them, and then bring, hopefully they'll resolve it, and then they bring it back to us.
Okay, so what, what other paragraphs besides 38 are you?
I, I only have one. And I said, I know that there's some other members that might have had some concerns.
Okay. Kelly?
Because I take lots of notes. All right, so the first item is number 10, which is the cars, the storage. The second one I have earmarked is number 26, adding agreements. The third one.
Both agreements.
Both agreements. The third one is 35, splitting, assignment, and subletting. The 38 is the threshold for immediate termination. Those are the ones that I heard. Did I miss anything?
The only one I heard was Councilman Porello's one on the discrimination.
Oh, yeah, 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 good job. And that one is.
46?
Thank you, 46. Yes, you're right, 46. And that is B, 46B. I feel like I'm bingo.
Right. There you go.
So those are, those are the ones. And then, oh, the waiver, you're going to add that into the fee schedule? The 2%?
2%.
Fee wave?
Yeah, transfer.
Right, transfer. That was something that we had talked about. Was there anything else?
No.
The pilot's license thing?
The pilot, the pilot's license thing, that was.
Oh, there you go.
Inclusion of the pilot's license number, uh, sublet, section one.
If that's, I don't know. If that's available online, I don't see it as.
Well, that's, that was the point, there was a point of contention there as to whether or not the pilot's license.
Right. When, when you bring an airplane on the field, you have to submit your insurance and, and all that, and I'm assuming that your, your insurance binder is not a public record that can get requested through a FOIA. Is that not true?
Depends on whether.
My binder that goes into the airport, I'm guessing is not retrievable with a FOIA.
If a record is used by the county in the pursuit of the public business, it becomes a public record.
Thank you. We just need to suggest not using your.
Okay, so, you know, I think, I think you need to take a look at, at what things you, how you can do it, because I'm guessing that if somebody did a FOIA for my insurance, they wouldn't get it. But I may be wrong.
Is, is there a concern on this body, the, the point that was brought out, that the private pilot hangars and the information that's required of them is different than the large one that was shown on the board? I believe it's Cloudline or whatever, the bigger hangar.
Of the Cloud9 project?
Cloud9. I, that's, that's probably just, I think that the, that you need to take a look at the leases in general and just make sure that they're the same, the same wording for both, for, for the potpourri of, of leases you got.
Treated same.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, directed to Supervisor Long, thank you. I think that was very accurate and those should be included as such. There's a motion on the floor. I seconded it. I wonder if we could proceed with that.
Is anyone else, I would, Supervisor Long pretty much covered the gamut of what, of what my concerns were.
All right, so the motion includes those numbers? It's been first and second?
And is staff, does staff have any, any further questions or clarity?
I don't know if this is the spot, but there is, there is two board supervisors sitting here, and we've had legal counsel say that we don't need to go down certain roads with things that are being requested. I'm just want to make sure I'm understanding that request is still to go down that road and try to consider that.
It's not only two board members that are here on this board.
That's true.
So we, it is not, and we are not a, we have only two.
Serving in that capacity, okay.
So we don't act in that capacity as the voice of the board.
Very good, thank you.
I just think, my logical. So with that, there's been a first and second. You guys also will be reviewing this and come back to us with your suggestions and so forth, right? That's usually how it happens.
I believe it is.
Sounds good.
So we'll have it the next meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion. So if the motion was something other than a request for staff to report back.
Modifications.
The, the, and.
Motion, the motion I made is to take these five items and work through that with them and bring, bring us back the negotiation, you know, the end product.
An amended lease.
I don't advise this body for Brown Act purposes, but you might want to consult with somebody to determine whether or not that motion complies with the Brown Act, because you can direct staff to report back.
Oh, not report back. I'm, I'm just saying this. We have, I, my motion was take four, I said four, but now I think it's five, of the top concerns and. I think it's five, of the top concerns, and go back and work those five out, and hopefully you'll successfully agree on those five, you'll work it out on those five, and then bring us back what you brought back tonight, but with the amendments of those five revised list.
That's a Brown Act violation, that motion.
Why?
Why?
Could you, could you, could you please provide clarity as to why council believes it's a?
Yes, if, if a motion is made to take an action that's not on the agenda.
I see.
And that, that action is something other than to have staff report back.
I see. Okay, so.
You're potentially in.
So I'll revise my motion that the four or five are worked through, and they're brought back to us, and then we'll then request that it come back again. Is that correct? Mr. County Counsel?
Staff's recommendation died for, for lack of a second, so staff's recommendation won't move forward.
Correct.
It's.
So if you'd like staff to report back, you can make a motion.
Okay, I understand.
Staff report back, and you can give direction as to what you want a report back on.
Okay. Mr. Chair, so I understand that, and so it's not agendized to do exactly what I said. So let's take the fi, let's take those five issues we've identified, and we're giving direction to the staff to go back, renegotiate those, and report back to us. That's all we can do without violating the Brown Act. Is that correct, Mr. County Counsel?
Is that motion?
I believe, as you stated it, I wouldn't have a concern, yes.
I did, I'm sorry, I did not hear what you said. What did you say, sir?
Well, you, you put me in a difficult position, because I can't give you Brown Act advice. But to the extent I'm a participant here, I did, would not like to see a Brown Act violation take place.
Absolutely.
So I think, as you've stated it, my concerns about that are gone. Is that?
Yeah, how would you advise, how I could rephrase that motion to make it consistent with?
Make a motion to have staff report back on X, Y, and Z.
Okay, I'll make a motion, have staff report back on the five items. And I had a second from Mr. Calhoun. Unless Mr. Calhoun wants a second again, just to make sure.
Yeah, you would need, you would need a new second.
I second it.
Okay, all right, there it is.
I do too. The question is, this lease will be brought back to us next meeting?
We're going to report back.
Did you get that in that motion? Is that clarified?
That's what he says he can't do.
You can't bring this lease back, so how would you bring the lease back if you don't bring it? We agendize it? Okay, that's fine.
Please put the lease.
Well, can, can, this, 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 this body can, can make, make a motion and request in second that we agendize this very topic for next meeting.
Yes.
I saw move.
I guess I just made the motion.
You made the motion, you seconded.
There was already a motion on the floor.
We have to vote on that.
You want to vote on the first one?
Pardon me, I can include that in the motion.
Yes, please.
So let's just make it the motion.
So we're giving direction to staff to work on, report back on the five issues, and we're also requesting that the staff bring back the, well, I think that might violate.
How about this, how about this? Staff has heard all of our comments and, and discussion. So I, I'll, I'll simply make a motion that, that I, I request that we agendize this topic, the, oh, item 6C, all right, like I, I agendize item 6C for next, our next council meeting, and staff to bring back that, that same agenda item.
But you don't want it the same.
I don't want it the same. I make a motion that staff simply bring back this topic at our next meeting.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I just, just, I'm losing, I'm losing this a little bit, or, or maybe I've just lost it. Look at me. Have I lost it? Anyway, okay. So I, I had a motion, and it was to bring this back, and I, I mean, I would, I would recommend that maybe what we do is vote on the motion I made, it was seconded, vote on that, and then if you want to, and then I, I would ask the county council, I guess what the intent is, not to go through two meetings. Is that possible to avoid? Is that correct? Is, am I understanding you correctly, that you would like to have this brought back next week so that we could also entertain?
Next month?
Or next meeting, next meeting, not next week, I'm sorry. But the next meeting, so that we could approve it. Is that correct? So by having it agendized? So I'd ask the county council, does, well, maybe you should ask the county council, I should just have mine voted on, so I don't get involved in that. So I would just ask Mr. Chair that we vote on my original motion, or my third or fourth revised motion with the second, with Mr. Calhoun.
So let me ask this, sorry.
My motion is to give direction to staff to work on these four or five issues and report back to us at the next meeting. That's my motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Calhoun.
Let's vote.
Let's vote on it.
Okay, let's vote.
Can we vote?
Let me, let me offer this. Why don't, why don't staff offer to bring this back to the next meeting?
That's great.
And, and keep this from being any potential violation of the Brown Act.
I don't think it's a violation of the Brown Act, but I'm not an attorney, but I know that all of our cities and the county can all do that.
I know we do it regularly at city council meetings. But I appreciate staff's offer to bring this back at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Would, would the authority enlighten me to take a five-minute break, seeing that we've been here for?
One more item?
We do have one more item.
Five-minute break.
But a five-minute break. The Airport Authority, Camerio and Oxnard, and we are going to take up next item, item D, under the Camero Airport Authority. Does staff have a report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to quickly turn this over to our projects administrator, Aaron Powers.
Good evening, Chair, authority members. We're here tonight to request you recommend the Board of Supervisors certify and approve the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for the Cloud Nine Project. In a few moments, we'll turn the presentation over to our, the environmental expert, Ms. Judy Kraus, who was hired by RKR to develop the document. Ms. Kraus will summarize the environmental findings and answer any technical questions that you may have. But before we get there, we did want to take the opportunity to clear up some confusion surrounding the project and its impact on aircraft operations at the airport. There's been statements that the airport, about the airport's classification of activities. And so currently, the airport is, airport, operating as an airport design group three, which means that aircraft up to, including 737s, may operate today at the airport, as long as they, of course, would meet the weight limitations. So the idea that the Cloud Nine Project is going to facilitate 737s is not true. We have activities, we have infrastructure already that can support the type of aircraft we're talking about, and that there's concerns with. Specifically, Cloud Nine has, it will not facilitate 737s, even though they, they could have chosen to design their project to current airport conditions. The developer decided not to design the hangars to be able to size them for Boeing Business Jets or 737-size aircraft. And so, you know, the slide that I have up is really to demonstrate that whether the Cloud Nine Project goes forward or not, that there actually is no change in the type of operations coming into, to Camerio Airport in terms of what can, can come in. Sometimes, the best way to try to define a project or learn more about it is to talk about what it's not, or what it does not do. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that I specify that the project doesn't change the type of aircraft which can come into Camero Airport. It also, and I said JPA, so I apologize there, it sounds like it's the 1976 agreement.